The Chair would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees in the Village of Lake Barrington, Illinois this Tuesday, March 5th. It is approximately 7:07. And I will ask the clerk to start. I please call it.
President Richardson.
Here.
Trustee Burke.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell. Trustee Perkins. Trustee Rigby.
Here.
Trustee Schaller.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item four is the approval of the minutes taken to be considered a block. Just two items on this. We always have the custom of allowing the record to remain open for any technical or conforming amendments to the minutes that board members would like to offer subsequently. Ask unanimous consent that the record remain open for that notice for a period of five business days without objection. And so, the other thing I want to point out in the minutes of the board meeting from last February is when Burke and Thompson are here, you know, the meeting was done in forty-two minutes.
Whoa, whoa.
Yeah, forty-two minutes. Forty-two.
What?
We galloped that puppy through the pasture two months ago.
You couldn't have been there. Better than somebody dressed like you.
Now, Alice got it on tape.
And I missed it. I'm sorry I wasn't here.
We were out here. I was home watching TV at eight o'clock.
You had somewhere to be.
Are there corrections or edits for the clerking? If not, we will allow the record to remain open for a period of five business days. There being none, the Chair would like to motion Consider a Block Agenda Item 5A and B. Minutes of the Special Committee of the Whole, February 12, and Minutes of the Board of Trustees for February 11. May I have that motion, please? By trustee Burke. Seconded by trustee Thompson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All upstairs, since no one's not here.
Okay. Let the record show that trustee Schaller upstairs. Motion carried. We have some really good things of the President's remarks tonight because they don't focus on the President. We have some great news in the Lake County Sheriff's Office, and we have some great news with a new addition to the village team and the Ethics Commission. Karen, would you like to set up, or John, excuse me, would you like to set up Agenda Item 5A, and Scott and Chris come up?
Well, we, as part of our Village of Lake Barrington Police Department, we are a little fortunate that we have the Lake County Sheriff's Department as our police department. And I have been extremely happy to be a part, maybe not a part of, but just have association with Chris Thompson, who up until a couple of weeks ago was the Asia Commander for the Highway Department for the Lake County Sheriff's Department, but has been now elevated to Deputy Chief in the entire Highway Department for the Lake County Sheriff's Department. Well deserved. Worked hard to accomplish that, and can only benefit the Village of Lake Barrington in that capacity. And he brings with him Lieutenant Scott Kirk, who will assume many of the responsibilities that Chris had beforehand. So, thank you very, very kindly. Congratulations. And tell us about all your new responsibilities there, sir, as a resident of the Village of Lake Barrington as well.
Well, I'm very happy to be a resident of the Village of Lake Barrington, and super excited to get my sheriffial work promoted me to Deputy Chief, Highway Patrol. We have, right now, we currently have three deputy chiefs. One oversees court security, one oversees criminal investigations, and the other one oversees the Highway Patrol Division, which is the division that we're from. We have about 104 deputies, give or take, at any given time on the Highway Patrol. We service the entire county. I have three lieutenants and seventeen sergeants that work for me over there, along with about eighty-seven, ninety deputies right in there. So, if I have the math wrong on that, but it fluctuates from time to time, as you know what, how budgets go. So, I am just getting used to this. I'm, like I said, I'm super excited to take it over. We're changing a lot of different things that we do and the way we do business, but the way we do business with our contracts is not going to change. We're going to keep building on that. Lieutenant Scott Kirk and I have been working together for twenty years. I consider Scott a friend. He's one of the hardest working, one of the sharpest guys we've ever had in the Sheriff's Office that I've been around. So, you're getting a good four shirt, handpicked. So, yeah, so things are great, and I appreciate your acknowledging.
And Scott, tell us a little bit about yourself.
So, I've been in the Sheriff's Administration for the last three-plus years, working on a lot of rewriting our policy book. It was pretty outdated, so I was in charge of doing that, overseeing some of the civilians downtown, just a lot of different odds and ends. But I miss Highway Patrol. I had the opportunity to come back to Highway Patrol as a lieutenant on afternoon shift. I too am excited for this new venture in my career. As DC Thompson said, I've been here twenty years, and this is just going to be another chapter in my book for the Lake County Sheriff's Office, and I'm pleased to be able to help you folks with whatever you may need.
Well, as Deputy Chief Thompson will tell you, occasionally I will call his cell phone number on something before I spot it if I can't get hold of our administrator here. And they will have been remarkably responsive. So much of our job in a small town is to be eyes in here, so that if we spot something, we can, you know, it's the old airport, if you see something, say something. You guys have just been first rate on this. We couldn't be happier with the relationship. And please let the Sheriff know he's welcome as our guest here anytime. His schedule moves him down towards South West Lake County. I'm happy to recognize trustees for comments. Trustee Rigby.
Well, Deputy Chief, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
There's a lot of, a lot of time and effort and long nights, I'm sure, and all that. So, to you, young man, we'd like to have you. Thank you. Welcome to the board.
Trustee Burke.
Congratulations to you. We're especially pleased that you're a resident here. We've enjoyed a great relationship with Lake County Sheriff, wonderful, and you're now a part of that here. A lot of pride on both sides. We take a lot of pride in security, but we know that as you guys police, help police us, that I see a lot of pride that has always been taken by Lake County Sheriff. And that shows in the interactions that we have here. But it also shows, I run into folks on the street all the time, driving through the neighborhood, always going to stop and talk and chat and ask what's going on. So, there's a real relationship here that we, we're very proud of. You've been a big part of that, and you're a joint part of that fraternity, so we welcome you as well.
Trustee Thompson.
Mr. President, first, I would like to reiterate what trustee Burke said. And will you invite you to use the military police?
No, I was not.
Okay. Just probably ask you a little. Anyway, so, welcome, welcome both of you. I'm really happy to have you, Lieutenant, working with us, and so long, Deputy Chief.
Go on. Now, you can complain to us about lousy village services. You know, the one area, and Robin Stankowitz does such a nice job for us as well, I think that the one big traffic issue that I notice consistently, and one of my girls was young, my wife was taken to and from school, so it was really a topic, is people feel compelled between Route 14 and Route 22 on Kelsey Road to treat it like a German autobahn and see if they can get to 150. And when they come off the stoplight at 22 in Kelsey going north towards this building, they're at 65 miles an hour when you get to Dr. Dollop's property. And I've seen her pull a few folks over for that. It's excessive speeding, it's not just five miles over. And I'd say River Road and Kelsey Road are two very vulnerable roads in that regard. At night now, because of the deer population problem, I actually go 40 miles an hour. I go slower because I worry about a deer coming out of nowhere. And I saw, she happened to be there when a young fellow hit a deer through no fault of his own, and I pulled over too to help. Anything you could do to keep the pressure on obedience of the law on Kelsey and River, and also on 22. I mean, this is not the tollway, and it's too often treated by people. The other one is my pet peeve, the people are not hands-free with their cell phones. And so, as you continue this great work, please keep those things in mind, because we appreciate the fact that you worry about our safety. And those are the things that I worry most about on a day-to-day basis. Thank you both gentlemen. Congratulations again, Chris.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief, congratulations.
Thank you.
He now becomes our official lead aide-san two as far as the Sheriff's Department.
There we go. Thank you.
Jim, just, you know, be careful when you ask for, probably to your wife and my wife, to be the first to.
Oh, let, yeah, now, let, but, Barrington Hills is fine, just have already had that encounter. Agenda item 5B tonight, and then under 5C, I actually want to take Agenda Item 15B out of order, because we have some residents here that are interested in that issue, and I want to not keep them here all night. But let me yield to trustee Thompson for Agenda Item 15B. Concerns for swearing in of the new Ethics Commissioner. By state law, every municipality must maintain an independent Ethics Commission. And there is a set of duties, and we have a vacancy because Lorenzo Pizarro, after years of good service, has moved to Boston. And I want to thank trustee Thompson for nominating an outstanding candidate. We had great conversations, and she gets swearing in tonight. So, Jim, if you'll do the honors, say it, Mr. President.
Ms. Geiser, Ms. Geiser. Diane Geiser. Ms. Geiser has over twenty years of experience using clinical, technical, interpersonal, and managerial skills in both clinical and corporate settings. She successfully navigates change for individuals and organizations through teamwork and setting of realistic goals to ensure the mission is understood and implemented. Her clients includes large corporations as well as government entities. She owns and operates her own clinical practice, and she provides clinical supervision, training, and mentoring to Navy counselors working at the Great Lakes Naval Hospital. And as a veteran, I'm really thankful for that. Thank you. And she's a licensed clinical socialist, a social worker at Lutheran General Hospital at Park Ridge, and she's a partner in a family-owned manufacturing business. All that out of the way, personal note, I've known Ms. Geiser for several years. From that relationship, I strongly recommended her for this position to President Richardson. Her expertise will provide excellent value to the village, and I want to thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm going to yield to trustee Rigby for the purpose of administering the oath of office, since he also is a good friend of Diane's. And Jim, thank you for, for what is a fine candidate.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
This is totally unrehearsed, right? And I too, I too, would like to vouch for the veracity of what Jim said about Diane. I've lived across the street from Diane now for eighteen years, no, fifteen years, fifteen years since I moved in here. Are you ready to take the oath of office? Raise your right hand, please. Aye. State your name.
Diane Geiser.
Having been appointed.
Been appointed.
To the Office of Ethics Council Commissioner.
To the Office of Ethics Commission.
In the Village of Lake Barrington.
In the Village of Lake Barrington.
In the County of Lake Aforesead.
In the County of Lake Aforesead.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Ethics Commissioner.
Of the Office of Ethics Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Diane, because our meetings are actually watched by residents, I get feedback from them, would you please introduce yourself to the community, a little bit about the background that Jim mentioned, and how long you've lived in Lake Barrington, and some of your personal story?
Thank you. Diane Geiser, resident of Lake Barrington Shores since 2002. And John Chell is the president of our association. He vouched for me to move into LBS. Here I am. I'm a, I have had private practice in Vernon Hills, and now I just moved to Lake Zurich. So, I have two offices there. I'm very involved in the golf community at LBS, and anyway, I can be, I try to support the community the best I can. I work at the Navy Hospital, I'm very proud of that as preceptor, so I turn the counselors there to be counselors and go on on ships. I've been doing that for eighteen years, so I'm really proud of that job. And I'm a family, cell side, I have a lot of relatives, sisters, brothers, nieces, and nephews. I spend a lot of time with them if I'm not golfing, so that's me.
You know, because we have a very active veterans group, as you well know, and a lot of veterans in our community, talk a little bit, if you can, about the kind of training, what do you teach these preceptors to do, and what's the curriculum include, just out of curiosity?
So, the Navy counselors are, it's a special school in the Navy, so they have to go to San Diego for three months, and they get the didactic, and then they're shipped to Great Lakes. It's their deployment, so it's a shore duty, what they call shore duty, and they're with me for three years. For the first year, they have to go through a core competencies, thirteen core competencies, be exposed to those. I observe them, and then when they're done with their year, they're able to take a test through the Navy, and if they pass that test, then they stay on for two more years, and they actually deliver services at Great Lakes Navy Hospital. When they're done in that three-year deployment, then they're shipped out to a ship, and they're the party contact on that ship. So, we work with primarily substance abuse is what the SIR program is, but we, of course, treat the PTSD and all the other things that are coming up with the Navy. So, the counselors have to really, that three-year of training, annual training is very necessary for what they're exposed to when they're on a ship.
We have a custom here of each trustee being able to offer a few words of congratulations. Jim introduced you, but if you'd like to offer any additional words, we'll run and let everybody out.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Ms. Geiser is a wonderful, wonderful partner with the Lake Barrington, the Village, the Lake Barrington Shores Veterans Association, organization. Every year, she produces a special dinner evening at the country club, and the proceeds of which go to the veterans of Lake Barrington Shores. It's a wonderful evening, and we are truly thankful for what you do for the veterans. Thank you.
I love doing it.
Trustee Burke.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Very impressive background. I love what you do for the community, for the veterans, and we're really thrilled to have you as part of our family here. Come with a warning, though, you know, and that warning is that a lot of people sitting up here were standing there, you were not too long ago, so they'd be called the gateway drug. People tell you it won't take a lot of time, and it won't. And then the next thing you know, they'll want to bring you into the planning commission, and they'll want to bring you onto the board. So, I just wanted to give you a fair warning.
Thank you.
Fifteen years ago, or I don't even know how many years ago it was, that I was asked to do the same thing, and it wouldn't take any time at all. So, I'm now, been sitting up here for longer than I can even reflect.
That line that I use is the gift that keeps on giving. Because every one of you guys started off that way, that I suggest you take twenty minutes a month.
So, anyhow, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Trustee Schaller.
Congratulations, and welcome to be involved, more involved with the village. You're already involved in LBS and social activities, and I think you are the Miss Social Leader of probably Lake Barrington Shores at this point in time anyway, with all that you do. But actually, I've known Diane longer than that, because I was briefly in the printing business, and Diane had her office in Lake Atchirri at that time, and we used to do some, some work together. So, I've known Diane for a long, long time. We're proud you are a resident of condo seven, because it's got heaven and stuff.
Right.
And welcome to be involved in the Village of Lake Barrington. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
Trustee Rigby.
Well, I think I might tell them a little bit about you. One of the reasons I think that Diane is interested in the veterans organization is her dad was a veteran. He was a very special veteran. He was one of the Rangers that went ashore at Normandy on the sixth of June, 1940. And I got to take him to breakfast one morning, and he told me about the cold water, and what a story, what a guy. We lost him a few years ago, but he was a great guy and a great American. And I'm sure that has something to do with your interest in the veterans, yeah.
Thank you very much.
We are grateful for your willingness to further serve the community in this capacity. You know, you never want the Ethics Commission to have to work on anything. You may be the only person, I actually mean it when I say it, it won't take any time. If we don't get into any shenanigans, you shouldn't have any cause to be, but we take governance and we take public trust very seriously. And one of the ways you do that is to bring people into the process of their notable integrity, and we're known for being upright, and we're grateful that you're willing to lend your name and your time to a pursuit like this. We will talk about the commissions later. Thank you for.
Thank you for your mind to be on board.
Yeah. Jim, I would like to yield to trustee Burke, let's take Agenda 15B out of order, and then maybe have the neighbors come up and introduce them, and then I'll ask the administrator to set up the conversation.
I'm looking for 15B.
Isn't this it, Karen?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was going to say, I wasn't going to have you guys come up, but if you're willing to come up, I think this would be great. Do you mind coming up, Tom, and just introducing yourself, and Danielle, you as well? We had some discussion on this topic in our committee of the whole meeting, and so there won't be a lot of additional discussion on this topic, but it really got started with Tom, who's my neighbor and who is, runs a wonderful landscape business called The Barn Nursery, and brought this to me and asked me what I thought, and I encouraged him to bring that forward for discussion. So, if you don't mind, Tom, to just introduce yourself real quickly and let the rest of the board know what your interest in this amendment, where that comes from, and Danielle, if you want to introduce yourself afterward, it'd be great to.
Thanks, Tom. Because I live in the Estates of Lake Barrington, six years now. I run a landscape design construction division, which works citywide, Chicago area wide, Wisconsin, find myself in Rockford, Southern Michigan at times. And it's just been running my attention through multiple projects, multiple projects in unincorporated Lake County governed by our local Lake County government that automatic locking covers for pools in many ways are a lot safer than a pool fence. And I realized our code had maybe fallen behind over a month, two years, and could be updated for the newest technology, and just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. There's a lot of benefits to automatic locking covers. They are incredibly energy efficient. There's major, major safety concerns, because they not only keep people from the outside coming in, but they keep people from inside your house going out. I've found with clients that have that, if they're not using the pool, they're covered because of that energy efficiency of the heat and the chemicals, sun, and air on the liners, and guide of the pools themselves. There's a benefit besides safety of using it, which makes them use it more. Pool fences are highly beneficial, I think, in some ways, but the negativity of it is one, frees the thought, continually moves those posts, and I find that after a couple of years, most of those automatic locking gates are not working, and no one in government is overseeing that on a regular basis. The automatic covers themselves, if they're not working, people aren't getting it fixed because of the energy efficiencies on top of the safety concerns. So, I just wanted to kind of bring that to the attention of the board. The international code has been revised in 2012, 15, and 18, and all do not require inflects with automatic locking cover. Any questions?
We did talk about this in the meeting beforehand, and so I just ask you, the administrator for counsel, have any further comments?
The L O S statutes do require us to give notice to the L M I Capital Development Board, where we adopt a new building code, and so we already, when the subject matter came up, we already sent that notice.
Great. Karen, anything you'd like to add?
No, so this is part of staff's looking at updating from the 2009 international building code that we use now to the 2018 edition. That'll take some time to do all that research, so we're recommending that we just make this provisional change for the, allow either or, someone can still choose to do the fences, or also allow the powered safety covers in line with the 2018 I T C, and with the A S T standards that they require, and we can propose that at next month's meeting to make that change in our ordinance.
So, by keeping it optional either or, you can save time?
By, I'd say, just adding to our current code, making amendment to our current code to allow for the powered safety covers, if somebody still wants to do a fence, they can still do a fence. And simultaneously, staff will be looking at the 2018 code, but that'll take a few months to go through it.
So, in the meantime, this gets.
This gets done before the season.
Yeah. But trustee Burke, any further questions or comments?
No, I appreciate the fast action on this. I want, I was appreciative that you guys came tonight. I also wanted to brag a little bit, because Tom, he oversees our landscape committee. If you remember, Bill, you remember Joe Rudolph, who was so active, he had the big shoes to build to come in behind Joe Rudolph, because nobody, you know, rides a tractor around the neighborhood like Joe Rudolph did. He's retired and moved to the city, but Tom has done an amazing job, and he's so invested, and he makes our property, we're very proud of our property that we have at the Estates of Lake Barrington. And we also talked tonight in committee of the whole, a lot about infrastructure and protecting infrastructure, live range, and retention ponds, and how important that is, and the investment that we make, and our HOA pays for, because there are many, many neighborhoods and communities out there where that stuff is deteriorated, is deteriorated, they don't have the funds, they're not organized, and they're struggling to figure out how to fix their infrastructure problems. So, I keep offering out the Estates of Lake Barrington as a model of an HOA who understood the seriousness of managing infrastructure, and Tom plays a key role in that too, ensuring that our ponds are well maintained and kept functioning, et cetera. So, we are very appreciative of the role that Tom plays at the Estates of Lake Barrington. So, thank you. Did you want to introduce yourself quickly?
Sure. My name's DeGuela Weisar. I live in Flint Lake Estates. So, while I do have a personal vested interest here, because we're looking at putting in a swimming pool, I do think that this was, it's very appreciating that you guys took a look at this, because I do think from a safety standpoint, it's definitely the way to go. As Tom mentioned, fences deteriorate over time. Kids hop fences. I have two little kids myself. They constantly hop the neighbor's fence that has a pool, so they can use it. They haven't given permission to do that, but they still hop the fence. So, with the locking safety cover, I really think we're looking out for the best interest of our gender. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You know, we can respond when people bring ideas to us, we're grateful that you took the time to do this.
I said, what's the difference between the power safety cover and a cover that some people put over their pool during the wintertime?
Yeah, it's totally different. An automatic locking cover is, you know, it's a mechanical thing. They can only be rectilinear pools that the track covers. It's on an automatic switch with a key that.
So, it's a mechanical that pulls it out?
Yes. It's a mechanical, and they're extremely, I mean, you can, I mean, the weight that they handle is enormous. I mean, one of the biggest, actually, Patrick, for putting her pool in, it's a great sales pitch from his standpoint, is, because he has older, most, most people putting pools in younger kids, and what he says is, when your kids are seventeen, and you and your wife want to go out to dinner, you can close the pool and take the key, and you can be, have peace of mind that you can know that the high schoolers aren't enjoying the party, and in a couple hours, you're gone. Though, you still need to put a winter cover over those.
You still do, okay.
It's recommended, yes, to just keep the weight off of them. It's not mandatory, but it's definitely recommended, but they're a totally different system.
As I shared with Karen, I came prepared with a whole bunch of stats, so if you're really interested, I can bring mine back. really interested, I can bring that back.
Danielle's dying to share this.
Yeah, the, yeah, Lake County have installed, I've been involved in a couple of projects the past couple of years in unincorporated Lake County and Barrington area and none of them required a fence with an automatic locking cover. Barrington Hills doesn't seem to care what way or another. Long Grove recently switched, they did not require it. Kildare, they were one of the first because they did not block fences. Being a landscape architect, that's one of the biggest things for me is you put a small fence around it, it looks like a jail, you wrap a whole half of an acre, the back half acre of a one acre property and it costs a lot of money and then you have to landscape it to make it look nice. So it's a big added cost for residents. So this new technology is definitely, I think, beneficial.
Further questions? Thank you, Chair.
Do you have a hub with the Markers for the first week?
Yes.
Okay. I have to be corrected on one thing and that is that I have not sent a notice on this change yet. I sent a notice relative to building permit fees. So we'll be sending the notice this week and that means it'll be a main action item for the board.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Well, we're grateful for you coming in and we're delighted to take this action. This doesn't require a formal motion or notice, so Chair would simply ask trustees to voice consensus for directing staff to undertake action relevant, relative to the proposed changes to our code related to power safety covers and undertake review in order to adopt the 2018 I T C standards as well. Is there anyone who wishes to object? Without objection, so ordered. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you both. Have a good night.
Okay. Peggy, I found a new website. Marriageoneliners.com.
Oh no. I hope Len is watching.
Woman said to her girlfriend, I just asked my husband if he remembers what today is. It's a great way to scare men easily. I got one every month, I got all these websites. Some hacker gets into my browser and goes, who is this gee?
Thank you for not doing an Irish joke.
Oh, that's the next, yeah. Agenda item six is the first opportunity in the agenda for the public to address the board of non-agenda items if there are anyone seeking acknowledgement or recognition of that purpose they're being done. Agenda item seven is the consent agenda. We will look at several items tonight and move by omnibus vote as permitted by Illinois law, which allows municipalities to adopt by a single unanimous roll call vote of the board of trustees and the village president, a group of designated ordinances, orders, resolutions or motions placed together for voting purposes into a single block or a single group. Following the motion second, a brief discussion may be held, it's not required on any individual designated item, but if a lengthier discussion is needed, we may request, anyone may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and they can appear either in the regular course of the meeting or in a subsequent meeting. Agenda item seven, A, is consideration, and these are all the matters that we discussed in committee of the whole prior to this evening. Consideration of a resolution regarding closed session minutes and audio recordings. B, consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between Barrington Township, Cuba Township and the Village of Lake Barrington to provide contribution under the local share agreement with PACE for senior citizen and handicap plus service. C, M C I Verizon Master License Agreement. Those are the three items. Are there questions or further discussion on any of these? Counsel, do you wish to make any comment?
I would just like to offer the comment relative to the M C I Verizon Master License Agreement that this Verizon wishes to put 693 feet of underground fiber optic cable in the village rights away. It is all underground and this is, this only covers the areas they are planning to install at this time, it doesn't cover any other areas. They will have to come back to the, to the village for further agreement if they wish to install other parts of their facilities in the village rights.
And I will ask the clerk to indicate for me, what is the resolution number under seven A?
Four.
Under seven B?
Five.
And under seven C?
Six.
Then Chair would like a motion to consider a block agenda items seven A through C stated in the recommended action from the consent agenda related to resolutions 2009- R-4, 2009- R-5, 2009- R-6. We have the motion thrown by Trustee Sheller, second, and by Trustee Rippey. Thank you both, General and Clerk, please call the board.
Trustee Sheller?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Lieutenant Richardson?
Yes, thank you. Agenda items, the Treasurers' report and I'll ask the Treasurer, Mrs. Hirsch, please come forward with our guest.
I apologize for you touching my phone. My son's wife is due any day and we were in this meeting earlier, I missed call from my son. No message, no text and he's not answering his phone. I'm just about to kill him. It's like, so I'm hoping it's a butt dial, it's a matter, it's not on TV, it's not, but anyways.
It's, it's, no matter how old your kids are, the same stuff just keeps happening.
It's happening, right, yeah. So actually tonight, we're gonna start with the investment report and I'm happy to introduce, Matt Bernardi is here with Bernardi Securities. At 12:31, 2018, made about a million six invested in two bond funds with his firm. So he's here to do a report and then I'll follow up with more, more of the numbers. So Matt, why don't you come on up? And Matt was here last year, if you remember Matt, so he's, he was here last year.
Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. To your joke, I have my anniversary date inscribed in my wedding ring. I have a fault for that, that day.
That's right. Well, my, my, my young nephew said, Uncle Kevin, how much does it cost to get married? And I said, I don't know, I'm still paying.
Jeez.
My wife doesn't watch this stuff.
She's horrible.
Yeah, we're gonna throw me under the bus when we have dinner together.
Well, thank you for the time of your time. Everybody should have this report that we put together. I would put in too much information. A little bit, just an update regarding Bernardi, slide two, really no, not much has changed since I was here last, where we still stick to our specialty, we're municipal bond specialist assets are, this is actually a little bit stale, they're north of 1.3 billion and about 90% of that is bonds and 90% of that is municipal bonds. So we're, we're really sticking to our specialty and that's how this portfolio looks as well. The portfolio in a, if you look at slide five, in a pretty volatile year for bonds, the Fed funds rate two years ago was a little bit about 1%, it's now a little bit north of 2.25%. The Fed raised rates pretty significantly last year and so for a portfolio that has a very short-term maturity, it's impacted by those moves, but we performed very well and outperformed the Treasury bond benchmark by quite a lot, it has since inception. This cash management strategy that you employ, because of that, has really added a lot of value to your cash holdings. But the portfolio still maintains a very short maturity, it's very high grade, double A and triple A municipal bonds and then also certificates of deposit, which are F D I C, U S government assured. The, in terms of the outlook going forward, that was kind of where we came from. Municipal bonds are still offered, a lot of opportunity compared to the other high-grade alternatives, so we still see ample opportunity. And when I say high-grade alternatives, I'm talking about high-grade corporates, treasury bonds and certificates of deposit. Municipal credit is stable nationwide. On average, there are pockets of weakness, we're standing in one right now in terms of the state, but there are still, there's still a lot of value to be found in Illinois, even though Springfield's having its issues. And then just kind of generally how we approach that, if you look at the history of the portfolio, the Illinois allocation, it's still above where the benchmark is, but we've dialed that back a little bit over time as the state continues to deal with its issues. And then from a macro perspective, the Fed has raised rates a lot the last year and a half, they haven't paused that. They are still tightening though, the balance sheet has, is being paired month over month. The Fed balance sheet is about $3.9 trillion now, it's actually down pretty significantly from 4.5 trillion. So they're still tightening, we're still in a tightening environment, but albeit it's a little bit slower tightening than where we were a year ago. So if you want to go forward a page to slide six, which shows your performance since inception, the general fund portfolio is up 1.33% a year, the water and sewer fund up 1.34%. The alternative, the Barclays benchmark, government benchmark is 0.85%. So this portfolio has added a lot of value to your cash holdings since the summer of 2015 and you can see on that graph below, this portfolio is up about 5% since inception and the benchmark is up a little bit over 3%. So you've had about 2% of alpha, if you want to call it that, because of the employed strategy. And then in terms of the composition of the holdings, slide seven is primarily, like I said, municipal bonds. There are some small exposures to certificates of deposit. And then in terms of the credit rating, the municipal bonds are all double A or triple A, so very high grade. The Illinois allocation, whether it's 8 or 10%, depending on what portfolio you're talking about, is all double A and triple A municipal bonds. And then the CDs are not rated, but those are backed by the F D I C. And if you want to turn to slides, slide eight, you can see the ladder structure, we employ the ladder. We don't want a time rates, we have, we've been tasked with investing no further out than three years. We want to keep an average maturity of anywhere from a year, year and a half, maybe two years. We've been, because the general fund took some, some funds out to purchase land, the average maturity has actually come lower because we have not been reinvesting, but we will start doing that, we have been doing that over the last couple of weeks. And then from the state perspective, if you want to look at the geographic breakout on slides nine and 10, the portfolios are very diversified from state perspective. The Texas is the largest holding of the general fund and then the water and sewer fund, Wisconsin is the largest holding. Two very well-run states. The second or the fourth largest holding of the general fund and then the second largest holding in the water and sewer fund is Illinois. We do not own, the funds do not own state of Illinois bonds, they do not own city Chicago bonds, county bonds, they own Northbrook, Illinois, Will County, these are double A, triple A rated municipal bonds. Northbrook, for example, is triple A rated and it's higher, it's got a better rating in the United States of America. And S and P, who's one of the two rated agencies who rated that issue, acknowledged that fact in the rating report, basically saying, yes, we give them a triple A and yes, we acknowledge that we rate the United States of America sovereign rated double A, double A plus. We think that Northbrook can deal with a stressful economic scenario better than the U S government can. So it's kind of an interesting paradigm. I haven't been doing that, doing this for that long, but I don't think we've ever seen that type of situation where you have a municipality is better, not healthier from a credit perspective than our U S government. So hopefully that doesn't, that paradigm doesn't become more prevalent with municipalities because that would be good from a macro perspective.
Matt, why is Ohio in a different color?
Ohio, those are pre-refunded bonds, so those bonds are essentially backed by treasuries. I'm sorry, I left the key off here, but that's basically a treasury bond. So just to sum up, the portfolio composition, very diversified from a state perspective. It's very high grade in terms of credits, even though you are, there is some Illinois exposure, there is some Pennsylvania exposure. Pennsylvania's not, is not as bad as Illinois, but they're having their issues there and it's very short maturity. The average maturity's anywhere from nine months to a little bit over here, depending on what portfolio you're talking about. If you'd like, I could talk a little bit about just the market, what we're seeing. If you want to go on to slides, slide 13, in terms of what we're looking, on a forward-looking basis, the, this is a bar chart of yields in terms of going up anywhere from six months to a year. And that red, the red bar, which is highlighted in yellow, is where the taxable municipal benchmark is. And you can see really up until three years, it's offering higher yields on an average perspective and our objective is to beat this red bar when we're buying bonds in the market. They're still offering more yield than any of the treasuries, even corporates and CDs. When you get up to three years, it's really a toss of day-to-day, market-to-market, new issue to new issue. So we're not blindly buying taxable municipal bonds for the portfolio. If a CD offers a higher yield at that time of day, when there's cash available, we'll be buying a CD. And that kind of speaks to the dynamic approach we've taken through life in this portfolio and one of the reasons we've been able to outperform the benchmark because we're, we're not, you know, sliding ourselves into one type of asset class, still staying very high grade though. And then, you know, really just to sum it up too, from a credit perspective, municipal bonds, there's a lot of concern, especially being close to some of the carnage in this market with Illinois. On slide 14, municipal bond default rates are still extremely low. The triple A municipal default rate over a 50-year time span is 0%. The double A rated default rate rounds basically to zero, it's 0.2%. This is the realm where we're investing. We tend to favor the double A versus the triple A, just because the default rates are that, are insignificantly higher and picking up more yield. So in terms of municipal markets whole, there's still a lot of opportunity to invest in high-grade issuers and to deploy, you know, the capital that's available. So now I've thrown a lot at you and we don't need to get into the weeds too much more from a macro perspective, but if there's any questions you might have about the portfolio and the market in general, you'd have to answer them.
Thank you, Matt. It is our custom to go roundly, to die soon, but people make any comments or ask any questions they wish, and I'll start at my left with Trustee Thompson, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'm a little shaky on that. You talked about the Illinois allocation early on?
Yes.
What, short-term, three, five years, wouldn't you think about that? I mean, the value?
We, with the, the type of credits that this portfolio owns and that we're allocating to just generally, we think it's a really good opportunity. If you look at the benchmark, it's about the tax, municipal bond benchmark is 4% or 5% in municipal, in Illinois municipal bonds. And if you look at, let's take the general fund for example, on slide nine, it's 7% in Illinois and water and sewer is in 10%. So we're over allocated to Illinois, we think it's a good opportunity. We think, especially for a three-year bond, Northbrook, Illinois is gonna be just okay. I would own the 30-year Northbrook, Illinois, that's not bad, we're tasking.
And I built on my colleague's question on this because we talked about this in this committee of the whole. These are municipal bonds from municipalities in the state of Illinois, these are not Illinois state covered.
Exactly, exactly. Sorry.
No, I understand that, it's just, I mean, I don't know what's happening in the state, you know, in individual municipalities, you know, where are they going? But it sounds like from what you said, what you said earlier, that you're picking and choosing very, very well.
We're staying high grade. Yeah, we're, overall, we've decreased the allocations in Illinois since I was last here, but we've increased the credit quality as well. So we're decreasing the over allocation, we're still relatively high, but we've gone up in the credit spectrum. Northbrook is a good example of that.
Well done, thank you.
Thanks.
You know, one of the other things, before I recognize Trustee Burke, because he may want to build on the point here, is we have a policy discussion on this on the board at least once a year and, and Mrs. Hirsch and, and Miss Vernon do a splendid job on this stuff for us. There are some municipalities who will go for a higher rating because they will keep more of their taxpayers' money in reserve. And that's a legitimate policy outcome. We have probably decided on balance to accept a half step less, maybe a double A plus, because holding five years' worth of operating funds that really are the public's money, Prudence says 70% of a year's operating expense. You know, we could run the numbers up, but as a matter of policy choice, we are cognizant of the fact that it's not our money. We act as fiduciaries of those we represent. So I wondered if you had a point of view or just from your experience with other communities, is our... is our decision or our choice one that you see? Or do you see folks really padding away big time for a rainy day? Because that will inflate your bond worth, your credit worth.
Well, you've, the fact that you're double A plus, you're there. You're basically across the finish line. It's double A plus, it's very hard to get a triple A rating in this market, in this world. Double A plus is a premier rating. You said, you said you're about 70% of cash to expenses.
About like, big?
Yeah, we have about seven months, 60% of seven months.
That's high, but that's good. And I, the question is, is it too high or too low? It depends on what the worst-case scenario is from the state of Illinois. It depends on what your pension, are there pension obligations for the village?
Very little, we're an MRF, yes.
Okay, so, and there's no TRS, you're not in the teacher pension. So the worry with a lot of municipalities is that currently the state's picking up, it depends on what municipality, but a good portion of the teachers' pensions contributions. And the worry is that, is that the state will push those down to the individual municipality. So a lot of school districts are seeing this, a billion of cash reserves or that. I mean, getting in a situation where the state says, we're cut off and you're covering the pensions for your employees going forward. You're not in that situation, so you don't have to probably plan as aggressively as they are. But being a double A plus credit, you're there, it's obviously managed prudently.
Thank you. And we need your, my colleague, trustee Burke.
No, that's fine. I just really, very simple, but I'm, we appreciate you being here. I look forward to this update. Appreciate that Mrs. Hirsch brought, recommended you to us and that our money is in very good hands. And this is demonstrated proof of that, that we are good stewards of this money. It's doing as well as it could be expected on the current economic conditions, as well as the constraints that we operate under. So we just appreciate your support and stewardship of our money. Thank you for being here.
Trustee Shaw?
Well, echo what has already been said, that I think we're fortunate that we have someone like you overseeing it along with our treasurer and our staff. And I think that's a report to the citizens of the village of Lake Huron, that they should be comfortable to know we are in pretty decent financial condition and because of such oversight, continue to be. And so that's a good feeling and our residents should feel that way as well. So thank you very, very much.
Trustee Burke, he chairs our finance and administration committee, so as you well know. So happy to have you back, clean up the questions on.
Okay, well, I'll clean up pretty quickly here. Matt, thanks, it's a great presentation, good to see you. We'll be getting this next year.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hirsch, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just, I had a separate report too, that I'll just go over briefly. It's also a separate handout that you received with the packet. So you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to hold. And I'll try to be a little bit brief, it's a dollars in front of you, I don't need to read to you. I'll just mention right at December 31st, 2018, we had about a million and six in the bond portfolios. That's down from last year at that point, it was about a million seven thirty-five. We did have a substantial withdrawal from the funds to pay, to go towards federal purchase, as Matt was mentioning. I guess the thing, as the treasurer, I should mention is, we were meeting all the objectives of the investment policy. There was, there are four objectives. One is legality. I know it sounds sort of obvious, but you know, all our investments are meeting all the state, local and federal tax, you know, laws. And so everything's done in a legal manner. Safety principle was the second criteria. As you can see by the level, the high level of bonds we're buying, the principle is safe. Liquidity, so we have to maintain liquidity to finance village operations. We're in these bonds one to three years. The average is about one year for, one, one, four years for the water sewer fund and 28,500 years for the general fund. So we have sufficient liquidity with the laddering involved too. I had sufficient notice to let Matt know we were intending a purchase with some of the funds. So instead of selling bonds, we just wait till bonds mature. We still have a buy and hold philosophy. We're not buying bonds on an investment basis and we're not moving things around the market. It's really just a buy and hold. We're just investing for the interest income, not to, for any, you know, any particular investment gains. And then lastly, the number four is return. We want to have a return to measure with the risk that we're undergoing in these, in our investments. And as you can see, these are really, really low-risk bonds. And so therefore, that returns can measure with the amount of risk that we're undergoing. So I just wanted to assure you that we are following the tenants of the investment policy that you established a number of years ago. And I think that's, that's important. As I mentioned, you know, we're just, we're just tasking Matt with one to three-year maturities. And, you know, sometimes with, when we have this buy and hold, you'll see a little fluctuation in the market values. We've made a decision not to mark these investments, to, to market each month. I've had conversations with the auditors, it's not material. Because of our philosophy not to be selling the bonds, we're just investing or just recognizing the interest income. I do track that though, and I will go through that in just a minute. But there's, you know, there's fluctuations, but not much because of the short-term nature of the bonds. And then just for the first calendar year, 2018, interest income in the general fund was $25,316. Interest income in the water sewer fund was $18,616. In comparison, last year was about $19,000 in both those funds. We can see as we know, interest rates are going up and, you know, as the bonds are, we are investing. And obviously, as rates are going up, we'll see what happens in the coming year. So that was sort of page one of my report that had attached page two and page three, looking at the general fund. And that's really just kind of tracking things. We did this on a monthly basis. Page two is inception history, since inception. And you can see at the beginning, we put $700,000 into the general fund. In 2016, we added in $250,000. And then to 2018, we took $175,000 out. With changes in interest, changes in the market value and interest that we did earn was credited to the account. That is $11,716 at the end of 2018. So that's an inception to, history to, since inception. Three is just something I did once a month when I received the statements, I can just sort of follow what's going on. I'm not, you know, really directing Matt to make decisions. I'm just sort of paying attention to what is happening in the accounts. That was page four then, is those same reports, but for the water sewer fund. So you'll see in 2015, we invested a half million dollars. In 2016, we invested an additional $250,000. We've not taken any funds out of that account to date. Page five is the same report that I did for general fund, but on an annual basis, just a little year, tracking each month as the statements come in, what's in the cash account in the bond fund and what's actually in the fixed income account and how things go back and forth with maturities or with purchases. So that's really what I had to add, to talk about, about the bond funds before I get on to the bank accounts. Are there any particular questions that I can answer? I know I talk really fast and cancel myself down.
Chairs, happy to recognize trustees for comments or questions.
Okay, well, then page six, what I wanted to highlight was what's happening in our bank accounts. So on this page, you'll see there's six years. I know, see the balances at the end of, at 1231, 2013, 1415 and so on up to 2018. Obviously, these are snapshots, so this is at a period of time, at a, you know, point in time. We did switch banks, if you recall, it used to be with BMO Harris. And on April 1st, 2015, we did switch to Barrington Bank and Trust. Up until that point, before the end of 2015, Illinois Funds was really paying very little on deposits. You know, you can see in 2015, Illinois Funds was paying 10 basis points. Here before that, they were paying 1.2 basis points, virtually nothing, while the banks were paying about 15 basis points, 20 basis points. There was a shift. Illinois Funds did a whole sort of rejiggering in their, and they became more an investment firm. And their rates of interest really shot up and they became very competitive with other investments. And you can see at the end of 2018, they're 2.31%, Barrington Bank's at 2.31%, which was helpful for us because for two years, Barrington Bank was substantially paying lower than Illinois Funds. And I would have conversations quarterly. I'd say, you guys aren't managing Illinois Funds, I can move my money over there, what's going on? And they would sort of shift them a little bit, they, you know, acknowledged my phone call and they, you know, shifted them a little bit. Which is this past year, where we've converted all these funds to what they call NAC safe accounts. They're like a glorified money market account. But you can see their rates have become very competitive, they're paying 2.3%. So, you know, anything else in the money market is, we're paying, we're being paid interest on. Anything in the quote checking accounts, they do not pay interest on. They do require what they call their compensating balances and that keeps our fees down. The fees used to be upwards of $100, $200 a month, now they're around 50. And they asked us to keep some balances in the checking accounts, otherwise we wouldn't have any of these checking accounts. They'd all be in money markets and we would move them when checks were being written. So we're, you know, we're, we have this relationship with the bank and, you know, we're getting together on that. But over 2018, the interest we earned on the bank accounts was $30,163. So you can see that whether we have our money, you know, in our money markets here or in our bond fund, we've done very well and obviously very secure. If you recall, we changed our investment policy, I believe it was about a year ago, to, we had this letter of credit with the Federal Home Loan Bank through the Barrington Bank and Trust. And they are guaranteeing all our funds in Barrington Bank. They started doing this weird thing, they were assigning shares of portions of an investment account to us. I worked with Jim and we had an investment policy drawn up. So I feel good about the security of those funds as well and the returns on those, on those deposits as well. So any questions I can answer about what's going on in the banks? Okay, anyone still awake? Okay, so that would be the end of that portion of my, of the treasury report I do have to write with monkey before.
We love this stuff.
Yes, we do.
I can see all these eyes blazing over.
It all sounds great.
It is, it's actually to me very interesting and I think it's really good to go through once a year. I decided to do it on an annual basis this year, it's much easier to use reports from the banks and the investment firms when they're done on an annual basis versus accounting versus our fiscal year. You know, breaking things off maybe is a little more needlessly difficult, so. Okay, so we can go to part two of the treasury, part, I'm sorry, 8B would be the financial statements. And that's for the month ended January 31st, 2019. So we're in our ninth month of our fiscal year, actually we're three-quarters through our year, 75% through our calendar year, or fiscal year, I should say. Looking at the flash report on page two. So you have assets of $23,355,000. We have liabilities of $597,000. Equity, $1,757. So there are total liabilities and equities equal to our assets at $23,355,000. Revenue for the nine months is $2717,000. Total expenses are $2426,000. And that's for a net income of $291,000. And just, you know, we had a long section in our, what we will call our below the line number this, this last month. There was a lot of adjustments to come to regular, regular income from operations. If you guys remember, there was this long section down below. And that was really recording all the income from using impact fees and all the expenses from using the impact fees. And so that was, you know, to be fully disclosing and to show you what was, you know, kind of what we would call extraordinary. But for the most part, they canceled each other out. And so what we've done now this past month is we're just showing major road work going forward. And that really is sort of impacting our regular operations, net income, regular, net income from regular operations. Excuse me one second. Get him out of that water, I'm sorry, thank you. That's how much I talk to you. So if we have any questions on that, I'm happy to, to go through that again. I know it sounds a little confusing. But we had taken an impact case and had the revenue and we had road work. We used the impact case to pay for and to purchase the property. So they, for the most part, netted each other out. And it became sort of a little bit jumbled up in there. So to make a long story a little bit shorter, there has been $26,000 of road work this year, which we call our, you know, our extraordinary, non-ordinary expense. And so when you take that out, our regular operations and income or losses, $317,000. And that compares at this point last year at $188,000. This is also, since it's in the quarter, we do look at, for the year, we have a quarterly, I hate to heavy jump around, but page 25, 24 and 25 shows our road maintenance, our non-MFT road maintenance by quarter. And it's predominantly in Cuba Township. You can see $26,000, almost $27,000 of road work done through Cuba Township. $4,000 Cuba Township is at our monthly contract amount during landscaping and that's predominantly snow services. We've had a lot of snow and salt up this season. And that's just for the pepper, the pepper path walkway there and that was $2,700. And then there's a section that was just how we used impact fees and that's $324,000 worth. And that's been segregated there as Gasky, Cuba and Parque de Asphalt. Always we used our impact fees this year, road work. And then there's a little thing for Woodmaster Fence. So we did that once a quarter to sort of highlight where those, those, who the vendors are and how that money is being spent. Any questions on that? I'm sort of flying through here. One thing I did want to mention is for the month of, the actual month of January, the actual net loss was $57,000. We've gone for a lot of budgeting exercises. We've been projecting estimated income for the year. And for January, we projected $57,000 loss. So we're right on target with how we projected and projected to date for budgeting purposes, which is important because all those conversations are being based on what we're projecting our net income to be for the fiscal year 2019. And so far, Deb's done a great job in anticipating what that's going to be. But those conversations are right on track for budget. Okay, so we can flip forward, we'll click to page 11 and 12. And that shows our budget to actual. I'm sorry, excuse me, it's page 10 and 11. Excuse me, it is page 10 and 11. So on page 10, where revenues are at 91% actual to budget. There was a big jump this month because we reported the use of impact fees in revenues. And so that did jump that percentage quite a bit. And the budget amount, we had budgeted to use $400,000 of impact fees and we've actually used $532,000 of impact fees. So that would naturally bring our actual budget up for that usage. And then on page 11, our expenditures are 82% actual budget. I believe that jump is recorded road work this past month, yeah. Oh, with the purchase of the federal lien property, this also was not budgeted. And that's at the end of the actual, it's $192,000. So that pulled our actual 100% up quite a bit as well this past month. But once again, we're right on track from a budgeting standpoint. And as we've been discussing in our budgeting work for fiscal year 2020, we are where we anticipated to be. Any questions on the general fund before I come on? Page 13 and 12 and 13, we have the motor field tax fund. We have about $217,000 of cash available in the motor field tax fund. Still growing around $10,000, $11,000 a month. We have no more expenses anticipated out of that fund this fiscal year. And we'll be using some of that next year though. Page 17, we have a million and four in the water sewer fund. There's no further capital spend interest planned in that fund this fiscal year as well. If we go to page 18. Excuse me, sorry, 18 and 19. The best our revenues at 72% actual budget. So we're right on track for being nine months into our calendar year fiscal year. Expenditures are at 60% actual budget, so just a little bit below budget. So our net old face is doing well in that, in that fund. Page 20 and 21 is the open space fund. No activity any longer going with the open space fund. You can see there's $100 in the checking account. And that's You can see there's a hundred dollars in the checking account and that's leaving a little bit in there for, just to keep the account open, one hundred and six thousand dollars. And the other bank account is really, is, is just for paying bond interest and principal payments. Okay, before I go on to the warrants, any questions on that? I mean, just seconds. I've repaid the accounts payable over here for your, in order, in order for your approval. Just three, what I would call non-recurring larger expenses on morning of this month. Nothing that has not been budgeted or anticipated prior to this evening. A Baycock news of six thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. This law called annual fee of two thousand nine hundred and five dollars. And the U.S. Conference of Mayor's Annual Membership of one thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars. Once again, those were all budgeted. I just mentioned those since they're not, sort of not recurrent larger expense. Warrant B, once again, we have some travel-related expenditures on this warrant. I'm telling you, find mine in one second. Here we go. Given with our travel reimbursement policy, these are highlighted for roll call vote. If you look at the bottom of the page of the warrant B, this is really all relates to travel. The village administrator traveled overnight to the Illinois, to the IL CMA conference, winter conference. These expenses have been included elsewhere in the warrants. For instance, two of these were in the credit card above, one is in the expense report above, but just for full disclosure, we are highlighting them separately so that it can be a separate roll call vote.
Yeah, and I'd like to point out that, what's it called, the GSA rate?
Yes.
Hotels is ninety-four and the hotel that they had to compensate was a hundred and forty-one a night.
Any question on the warrants? Okay, that's the end of my report then.
Thank you. Sheriff, again, I'm ready with questions from trustees with Chairman Ricky from the vice.
No comment.
Trustee Shawler.
No comment.
Trustee Burke.
I'm good.
Trustee Thompson.
I'm really good, Ben. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations to your sons.
I know, I can decide, just we're so excited. He's having a boy.
Where, where do they live?
In Lincoln Park.
Oh, so okay, so, oh, that's fine. Where, where is your grandchild being born?
Apprentice.
Okay.
So, and her mother's in town for a month. Her family's from Florida, so her mom's in for a month, so.
Poor woman.
Please, please text us.
Oh, actually, yeah.
We need to know.
Chair would like a motion to block to approve Agenda items A to P through B. B, approve the financial statements as of January 31st, 2019. B, or C, rather, pay bills in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety cents as listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated March 5th, 2019. And A to D, pay bills in the amount of thirty-two thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars and seven cents, thank you Lisa, as listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated March 5th, 2019. May I have a motion to block? So moved by Trustee Burke, seconded by Trustee Thompson. Thank you both, General and Clerk, please go ahead.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Ray B?
Aye.
Trustee Shawler?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes.
We can move to Agenda item nine.
Can I interrupt for one second? I have a text.
Oh, yes.
Mom, I need to borrow your car tonight. I brought my car out to mechanic at Dundee Northwest Highway. Is that possible?
All this work is never done.
After all that?
Only parents can understand that. Administrator dog line, please.
Sure, my administrative report. A copy of the executive summary of the Fox River Corridor Plan is on the diocese. This is just the summary. Complete copies are online or if you'd like to have a hard copy for yourself, let me know. I have a few of those available. You may recall last fall that I reported attending one of the open houses and reaching out to the Harbor Estates subdivision prior to the adoption of this corridor plan in McHenry County in October. And I want to thank Trustee Thompson for suggesting that a representative come to our meeting to present the findings, but due to time and travel constraints, the senior planner from CMAP and I thought it appropriate that you be provided with the summary. If you have any questions, we can respond at a later date. I attended the Lake County Partners.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm trying to understand, is this only in McHenry County or is this all through, does this pertain to Fox River Corridor or through Lake County as well or what?
It's, it's McHenry County, but it's Fox River, the part that goes through Lake County, I think right at the edge there by Harbor Estates. But it's an overall plan and kind of a suggestion for the river corridor as a whole. So they're very, you know, give a full new types of things.
They have to include Lake County.
Yeah.
Where's the worst issue?
Where comes through, yeah. But McHenry County sponsored this and CMAP.
Yeah, I'm kind of intrigued just by the, you know, the economic development piece of this and, you know, kind of what their view and, you know, there's a call out in here to Fox River Group and Cary Waterfronts and then Pepper Road, Business Park Area Marketplace Shopping Center. So I'm just trying to understand, like, so what happens next with this?
This is the type of plan that they're, they're going to receive funding at 219 Mark Quality Grants or 319 Grants to do some improvements. The projects first have to get done by the plan and so I don't see anything happening overnight.
No.
It's a very long range.
Yeah, but are they looking for an added engagement from us?
No, the plan's been adopted. It was adopted by us October. All the publications were last year.
No, I mean, like going forward or are they looking for some type of engagement or?
Not, not at this point for us, no. And where they, where they talked about Pepper Park, that was hey, if you have, let's say a bike path along the river, you know, you might get some bike traffic coming into Lake County, for example. Any other questions right now? Or if you'd like a full copy of that. I attended the Lake County Partners meeting. They hosted their municipal economic development advisory group meeting in February and they gave us an update on the International Council of Shopping Centers. Lake County work force development initiatives were discussed and CMAP did a short presentation on their onto 2050 plan. I think the biggest, one of the biggest benefits of this group is the portion where different municipalities share their experiences with particular types of development or incentives and people discuss really what occurs in their town. So that's, that's a good point of reference for us. Saturday, last Saturday, I met at Pepper Park Coffee with what I'm calling U of I Capstone Kids. That's the five students who are working on their senior project on updating our Pepper River market study. They're very enthusiastic and I'm looking forward to seeing what they come up with. They will be presenting their findings to our board at the primary meeting. Yeah, and Thursday, I'll be out at the office at Illinois NS4 Implementation Seminar in Schauber and that seminar focuses on meeting our permanent requirements with limited resources and overcoming implementation challenges, examples from other communities and the like. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Excellent report. Other questions for the administrator? There being an Agenda item, I'm just a question for.
Regarding April 2nd, 2019 consolidated election, early voting here at Villachalas March 18th through the 30th. The hours are Monday through Friday, nine to five, Saturday, nine to two. And on election day, it will be six AM to seven PM. Also, Yardways Collection starts April 3rd. Stickers are still a dollar seventy-five and we purchased at Villachal, Remax Now and Mower Works.
I think we're still going to be having snow and cold snow.
Are there any questions for the clerk? Okay, Agenda item number eleven, either standing committees. I don't have anything to report this month on either branding and cons or external relations. So we can move to lead community relations, special events and veterans affairs. Trustee Thompson, anything to report this month?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. I wanted to first talk about the albatross around my neck regarding the wall mural. I'm currently talking with three different artists to replace what we have up there. Rather than just take it down, paint over it, I want them to actually see it and get, you know, and also see what we have as far as the logo goes to make sure it's done properly. Hopefully that'll be done in 2019. You know, I, I spoke briefly with village administration, Ken Donley, and also with Trustee Burke regarding electric car charging stations in the village. And I'm keen to research that. I've had several people, several village residents ask me about electric vehicle charging in the village, so I'm working on that. It'll take a little while to get something together to report on. Next, there'll be no farmer's market being done by the village of Lake Barrington. I have a call in to Angels Soft Water to see if they're going to be doing one. And I've also indicated to them that, that if they so need it, I can give them the name of the person who would provide overall management and the acquisition of vendors and so forth. Next, I'm partnering with the Village Park District to develop music, movie nights and at Friar Farm. And also will work with the village attorney to develop promotional sponsors and food and beverage for purchase options. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Questions for Trustee Thompson? Thank you very much. Eleven C, can I do also, Trustee Burke?
Thank you, yeah. I'll be brief. We talked some earlier and next month we'll do our deeper dive, our quarterly report. Just a few highlights. One is Ryan McLaughlin from Mac Strategies has sat in on our last couple of Economic Development Committee meetings per Kevin's suggestion. And he's added tremendous value on two fronts. One, has made some really nice introductions for us and two, will become more instrumental as we do a bit more community outreach to our business partners and start figuring out how to actively communicate with them. One of the introductions that he made was to a gentleman named Rob Carr, who's the CEO and president, or you probably know him.
Wonderful guy.
You know, I had a nice call earlier this week. The Illinois Retailing Factories Association is primarily an advocacy group for Illinois retailers. However, as you can imagine, just about anybody, who's anybody in retail is a member of that. So the network's expansive and he said that he would be very willing to assist us in identifying relevant retailers or, and/or making contact with relevant retailers. I already gave him an assignment, which he reluctantly accepted. He kept saying, remember, you're a working advocacy group. I said, I know, I just needed to do this one thing. And that is, we would love a list of, of small to midsize or any specialty grocers in the area, that they could be either interested, they could be soul shops, somebody looking to build one, anyone who might be part of your membership. And we would like to see if we could get a list of those people and then ultimately if we could get a package of information to those people through you and then ultimately you facilitate introductions to these people. And he said he would be very happy to do that. It would just take him a little bit of time to do so. So I figured that might be the easiest way to get to those folks, many of them who wouldn't even know who they are. So that's a nice connection that Ryan helped us make there. So we'll keep you apprised of that. Very good guy, very eager to speak with us and very happy to assist in a manner that he could. So more on that. We, Karen and I met with prospective owners of the Pasquazie site. Don't want to talk about that yet publicly. They're still, you know, expressing keen interest in that and, and we're encouraging them to continue to ask questions of us, keep us surprised of what their plans are and let's make sure that we don't surprise each other with things that we can't accommodate or things they're trying to do that aren't really something that we can support or, or vice versa, things that we'd be happy to support, including asking them what type of assistance they need, they're looking for from the village. I think one of the most important points that we made during that call, which actually I think is maybe one of our most, you know, as we talked earlier, we might not have the pockets of some of our surrounding learning communities or the ability to maybe provide the same level of economic incentive, although we don't know that for certain. But one of the things that rang would be true during this discussion is that when we talked about wanting to be business friends and we talked about wanting to be able to be very efficient and, and responsive to businesses' needs, these people said, well, we've been doing it in another surround, business in another surrounding community and we already appreciate how simple you guys are to do business with. It's music to my ears and a compliment to Karen and her staff because they said the team here, every question, whether it's a zoning question or a code question or anything that we're trying to do, the staff has been prompt and professional and we already feel like it's a breath of fresh air. And, and in fact, the person said, I think that is one of the things that you certainly can say probably. So, you know, when we talk about, you know, what we call our economic development, I usually start there. You know, I don't start with incentives because as we are learning, those are sometimes tough, but not economic incentives, but the incentive is we want to make this easy for you. We're going to welcome you. We want you to be part of the community. We're going to treat you respectfully and we're going to make it as easy and fast for you to be up to speed, earn the money as you possibly can. And that actually resonates. You know, and I told them the story about fidelity motor group and that, that person's sole purpose for choosing this was knowing that you could be up running faster anywhere else, meet the, meet the least amount of resistance. And it had nothing to do with, you know, the rest of that and location. So that's resonating, so I wanted you to hear that. And lastly, I think Karen alluded to it, but, you know, we continue to stay on track and we'll review in deeper terms next month with our overarching plan that had on some behind others. But did you talk at all about the, did you share anything about the business license work that you're doing or would you like?
No, I would like to do that.
Would you like to do that? And I would invite you at this time to talk about the work that's taken.
It's interesting when you have such great staff and they're doing things that are good all the time, just kind of like take it as for granted, that's how you do stuff. So Lisa has been looking through our, our business licenses. She works with Kathleen, myself a little bit on this and looked through the renewal process and greatly reduced the number of pieces of paper that our businesses would have to fill out for the license renewal. There's been some minor changes on the liquor licenses, Lisa, and the liquor and restaurant licenses to make it a little bit more sensible and streamlined. It's still on pieces of paper that Lisa mails out and they fill out and return or, you know, that kind of thing. But we're looking at a couple of different options for next year and we'll be analyzing the whole system of that. So for this year, it's gotten a little bit better and we hope to make it even better next year.
And I think what's exciting about that is if we can really, we're trying to move all of this to be electronic and online, which would require people to then have access to this thing called a computer and have an email address so that we can bring all of our business partners and all of our processes into the 21st century by eliminating paper trails and just doing everything electronic. The other beautiful thing about that is we can start collecting a lot more information on our businesses and start creating much more comprehensive databases that are both, that are up to date. And then that's going to make our business outreach so much more simple. So not only is it going to save staff an immense amount of time, it doubles it. So not only is it going to save staff an immense amount of time to double it and, um, potentially even lower the cost of doing this if we can lower the, um, which is another way to be business friendly, um, but also allow the outreach and the information that we have on our businesses to be, you know, much more successful. So it's very, it's, and it's a critical part of our claim, if you remember, we said a big part of this is making ourselves business friendly, is improving and streamlining our processes, um, that make us more friendly to do business with. So that's going to be exciting development that's underway right now.
Well, and the one thing we're going to miss is we, we had a, a staff luncheon with, with folding papers and stuffing envelopes party.
Well, you know what?
Exactly.
We're gonna make Trusty Thompson, who's very good at parties, come up with another reason for everybody to have a luncheon. So, I'm not going to worry about that.
Okay.
And that's my report, thanks.
Excellent report, Dave. Congratulations, Karen.
Mr. President, I'd like to just make, make one comment about Trusty Burke's presentation.
Play on, you baby.
No, the, the, the streamlining of these processes, particularly with the economic development that he's working at, um, may get a significant feature for businesses to move into the village because it provides an excellent advantage over some of the other villages and surrounding us who we have big paper trails. So it becomes a, a civic endeavor, I think, to us, for them. And I think that's terrific.
Thank you for saying that. You know, the, at the end of the day, we're all volunteers and, as a practical matter and, and he's worked hard on this. Uh, I mean, everybody up here takes their responsibility seriously and I don't do it often enough to, to thank all of you for what I know is a great deal of effort. And we do it for, for the common good and, and I'm grateful, I'm grateful. Uh, are there further, any questions for Trusty Burke beyond that? Thank you. That's nice. 11F, or excuse me, he is Finance, HR Administration, Trusty Burke.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, no report this.
Thank you. Uh, Trusty Mitchell is absent. He got airline trouble to come home, so. Yeah, I worry about that a lot. 11G, Public Safety and Community, Trusty Schaller.
We heard earlier on the Lake County Sheriff's Department and I think that's, that's encouraging. I think there's a, uh, seems to be a renewed, uh, commitment to the job and I, I think we will benefit from that. I think, uh, Chris Thompson is a fine addition. I've dealt with him when he was the agent commander, as has Karen, and, uh, impressive. And I, and I think it's good that he was recognized for the ability and what he brings to that by being elevated to the position that he has. And, uh, I'm sure he will continue to be a part of the village. I think we're in good hands with our new liaison, so I'm very comfortable with that. 412, obviously, when we have a concern, there was, well, and we're fortunate. So, and I think they both have 40 explorers now instead of, which makes them happier more than anything else.
It's nice to have him as a resident.
It is, oh yeah.
I mean, there's this, another added.
Yeah, right. He's right there and, yeah, it's, it's, I don't care, we both have had meetings, conversations and when you and, and President Richardson, when you have a concern, you get a response very good. And I think that's, that's a good position to be in, especially when we don't have a police department, that they are a police department, so.
Yep, fortunate.
For that. Uh, very, I have been to a couple of the fire district gatherings where they get reports. Uh, they did have a pending ceremony back in January, countryside. They have ordinance establishing charges for their emergency ambulance. Uh, they had a resolution supporting the application of Barrington Hills by the Presbyterian Church for the installation of a cell tower on their steeple. So they're putting them on steeples now. Um, and then they also approved of an ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing and approving disposal of the set equipments, uh, which that they had. Uh, they're doing their annual review and check changes to their policies. The Wakanda Fire District welcomed Jeff Steinberg. He had been with neighboring countryside, the one over in Lincolnshire, for 37 years, most recently serving as their fire chief. And the department has hired him as a part-time director of strategic planning for the district beginning April 1st. So I think, uh, that's, both departments are, again, they have a countryside, Barrington countryside in Wakanda, taking care of, uh, emergency needs for us, uh, especially the residents of like Barrington Shores, receiving ambulances from Wakanda on a regular basis. Um, as far as the Ad Clay, uh, again, thank you to, well, before I get to that, the emergency preparedness steeple, uh, which was settled February 1st, but for which I was not here, Lisa and Administrator Karen Donley went to, do you have any quick report on that work?
Um, it went very well, I think. Um, I think we did a little summary in the peak of the week and, um, I think it was good for all involved to think about what would happen if a water supply got contaminated. So there'll be some, uh, from Bay Harbor.
Yeah, yeah. But again, thank you for your participation in that as well. Uh, the residents of the Ad Clay, uh, again, thanks to Administrator Karen Donley. Myself, we got involved, they wanted, and I attended their annual age away meeting. They expressed concern about awareness of Great Barn Lane, which leads into the Ad Clay. Originally suggested putting in a, a light there, um, came up with a more economic solution and they are ecstatic that now the Lake County Department of Transportation and Karen's kind of suggestions are working with, they put it northbound on Kelsey Road and southbound indicating where Great Barn Lane is. And they're real, they're very happy with that. Uh, Heather MacArthur, who's with Premier Residential Management, uh, says, thank you so much for all your help and efforts. She said their board will be very, very happy. So our intent is to, uh, obviously keep them happy. Um, Kathy Schwam, who is Community Sales Manager of Tallgrass, uh, said, the weather so far this year has not been in their favor, but they were able to pull one contract together during February and that's exciting. They have high-quality prospects coming through the door in recent weeks. She encourages the entire board to take a drive through the community if they haven't had a light, so film to see the construction progression and families moving into the neighborhood. Since the very end of October, they've had six closings at Tallgrass.
Wow.
Uh, they have three inventory homes complete and another one scheduled to be ready in April. Very aggressive in their pricing strategy to capitalize on the spring market. Hopes that several of these homes will sell and close in the next 45 to 60 days. So that's encouraging for Tallgrass.
That's great. Uh, question for you, do you know how many homes are now occupied in Tallgrass?
I don't know exactly. I thought it was.
I knew that and I forgot because I.
Oh, geez, you did have to.
Yeah, so I can give that to you.
We'll get that.
But I mean, is it 10?
Oh, it's more than that.
Yeah.
Well, it's, you know, it's funny about the way it's so, you know, spread out, spread out and walled in.
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, and we were driving down Kelsey Road the other day and my wife says, does anybody even live in there?
Wait, did you drive through there?
I know, but I said, you know what? We, we were going the other way and it was late, but I, I said, we should drive through there. I said, you'd be surprised.
They're actually scattered all over.
It's kind of funny because in way.
They're all over the property, even way up there.
Right, but you know.
Lots overlooking the van.
How success creates success and it looks and stuff. We don't really get to see what's going on. You don't notice until you, unless you're not conscious of it, right?
A couple of them backed up to Kelsey Road and that's.
Right, so there is perception that there's nothing going on.
Yeah.
You know, where your wife has a lot to.
Right, it kind of works against.
There is, so.
There was something, I think, I think Taylor Morrison has been very good for that whole development.
One of the residents there, Karen, I remember something with, uh, over a year or so, oh, two years ago now, said that's, that's the actual thing that they like the best about it, is he said on Friday afternoons, bless you, uh, he said, I feel like I'm going on vacation because it's peaceful in there, peaceful, peaceful, quiet. You're right, unless you drive in, you really don't know all the cool stuff.
Yeah, and 16 of the deer crossed the way over.
Yeah, and what?
16 of the deer when I drove down River Road the other day, they're all across the way over or our garden is named for LBS, although we do break one over there.
Well, that's after they visit my backyard. She was a grass.
She was a grass, had some, looking pretty good. As far as LBS, it's still there. Uh, veterans are doing well, are having a couple of speaking engagements coming up with, uh, one of the assistant chiefs from Wakanda, Kane, who's going to be, uh, speaking there as well. So it's alive and healthy now. Oh, we now have a flashing stop sign.
What?
Where?
I'd take credit for that because.
Right, right. Congratulations.
Because they don't believe that, that not coming, you remember, it used to have a, have a Van Ruis mission with non-synchronous gears and you, you know, you worked it right and throw it in the first, you know, oh, I do that with my Mustang and they caught.
Oh, and they saw, they just stayed with the rolling stock. Because the rolling's out.
Twice.
The rolling's out? They stopped. It's, it's unsolar, yeah. It's right in front of the rec center, right next to it. And it's, it's practically across the way. And they figured people like to run a stop sign. So it's solar and it's, it's somewhat activated by cars a short distance away and the stop sign is now flashed like, uh, the forest preserve path over here on Kelsey when you're, when you're walking across. So we'll see how effective it is.
We'll see if, um, Trusty Thompson starts to actually stop.
It's a really small panel, I think, for the size of the sign.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I hope it doesn't train all the drivers in LBS to only stop and see the flashing.
Flashing, right, yeah, yeah.
Virgil.
Yeah, so we'll be carrying that through the village eventually. That's the end of my report.
Well, that's, that's a nice segue, thank you to Rose, Infrastructure Prep. Is there anything for Susie to report?
Yes, there is. Um, our Anderson Road project is being advertised later this week. It'll also be advertised not only in the newspaper, but I got bulletin this Thursday and next Thursday. We're going to have a bid opening here on the 19th. Um, one of the things we're doing, um, just to get this out earlier, is I had hoped we could do our, um, soil borings, uh, because the soil borings are necessary to find out how wet the soils are underneath the pavement because you can do a cement stabilization process, which means the roads last longer. And a lot of, um, communities that go off for bid at this time of year, they just go, oh, we're spending brand new surface. Well, it might be a shiny new road for a while, but it could deteriorate more rapidly. So what I talked to the engineers about, um, at HR Green was to put it as an option, cement stabilization, in case we need it. So we're going to be going out for bids and then if it ever gets warm again, or freeze, um, we'll be able to take some of those, uh, pavement cores and take a look at the results and find out if we need to add cement stabilization. So, and, and this way by having it in the bid now, the contractor can't hold us hostage later, run it to the test later and go, oh, we need this. So I think that's, uh, it's, it's a good approach.
Good.
That's it.
Thank you. I'm delighted to say there are no agenda items under 12, 13 and 14, so we can move to 15A, go to permit fees under new business. Uh, is this Mr. Bateman or Ms. Donley?
Oh, probably a little bit of both. I'll start from.
You can laugh on the law.
Yeah, yeah. So our, our billing permit fees, as we discussed in the committee, the whole meeting, we haven't looked at them really in depth since 2011. So we, staff, we, we looked at our fees, um, direct costs and, um, to make sure that we're charging appropriately, not charging too much, not charging too little. So, um, uh, we looked at those and looked at some better processes to make some of the fees simpler. Um, one of the examples I gave was for residential driveways to make a flat fee rather than calculate it based on the width of the driveway of the street. Um, we looked at where we're spending out of pocket and, um, and so some of these fees were increased probably on average about 10% overall. Um, and what we looked to do is to take a look at our fees every two years and to reassess them at that time. Um, we did add some parking lot fees because, um, a couple of things, one, it could have the impact on store owner management, it could have impact on the new ADA, uh, the new Illinois Sensibility Code, I should say, um, Jimmy notified the.
I have notified the Illinois Capital Development Board, that's the one I was taking on. And I would say this, that the way the staff presented the information for the ordinance, I, I'm disappointed to report that it's very little important for me. In other words, and you know, it's really more or less, it's the same format as I got in prior years. We still have the ordinance, we just plug it in.
Yeah, so if, if, um, status looking for direction from the board, um, as to whether ordinance should be prepared for consideration at the April meeting.
Uh, Randy, do you have a point or?
Yeah, I'd say do it. Something a little better.
John, I agree. Andy, for sure. Yes, and I think you've got success.
Okay, thank you.
The staff gave a truly, an Excel matches up completely in, in order with the ordinance as its frame. It's a very easy document.
Kudos, kudos.
I hate to admit it, but you see what happens when you let engineers and finance people run the place.
Well, Eric and I worked on this and we had a lot of good back and forth and conversations about us, so it was a good, um, team effort.
Then, uh, I think there's no, there's no resolution or formal direction here, no formal motion part here, but, um, Chair asked me out of consent that staff be directed, uh, to work on an ordinance, uh, in preparation for the April board meeting relative to building permit fees without objections whatsoever.
Okay.
Okay, Agenda Item 16, second opportunity for anyone in public to address the board. No one seeks it, no, do we need a closed session or do we take care of it before? We do not. And my favorite, favorite motion, I'd like a motion to a chair.
Oh.
So, all those in favor?
Aye aye.